I'd like to call my line, County Board of Commissioners, meeting today is Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, and 9:01. Action will take on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly adjourned. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and diapers in silent mode, return in after the meeting. The board has always the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined, but for consideration, items may be pulled from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convene as other boards, members of the board, county commissioners also serve as the liquor board, Central Line Vector Control District Board, Masonville Mosquito Abatement District Board, Rock River Home Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting we convene as any of those boards as indicated on list or any or a separately posted agenda. This meeting will break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch. All commissioners are present and in chambers. So I'll move to the invocation given by Mitch Forster of New Hope Bible Fellowship. They stand?
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we call upon you, the creator and the maker of our universe and of our planet, and thank you, God, that you are a good God and always hear our prayer. Today, we do pray that everyone presenting that they would do so with a heart of calmness and peace and clarity. We just ask your blessing upon all these that are serving in this county. Show them, Lord, what a good God that you are. And we do pray for your wisdom, your knowledge, your insight into every issue that is discussed today. And we do ask that we would stay true to the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence of this great country. We ask that we would continue to live in the peace and prosperity and goodness that you have given us in this county. We do pray these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Hockaday, will you please lead us in the pleasurable leagance?
Pleasure to be in the spirit of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under the God.
We're going to just a public participation. No action will take on any item until it's properly adjourned. As anticipated, the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation will have to state their name for the record, and it will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. We have a public comment.
My name is Don Smith of Lucas Holmes Development. I'll see, just want to give you an update on the signal. We held our pre-construction conference this week. I stepped out for just a moment. It was the contract to let you know that bond was going to be issued to Lyon County. And I'll have that in Andrew's hands by Tuesday next week. The light pole's ordered. And if everything goes according to plan, we're a little bit slower than we had hoped to be because of recent events with our company, but that light should be ready for end up, make operational within five to six months.
Excellent. Any other public comment? Send number five for possible action review and adoption of the agenda. Anyone want something pulled or in a motion?
Then we can all make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Second?
I'm sorry. We do have one that needs to be pulled last. Final number here. It was seventeen, seventeen A.
I'm making a motion seventeen A. Make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented with the exception of pulling seventeen A. Seven's just hand?
Yes.
And a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, seconded by Commissioner Hockaday. So any public comment? The memo go to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. You better look me up. Just make sure I mark off seventeen A. I'm saying nine o'clock for presentation only. Presentation on Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Good morning. Dr. Sheila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services for the record. Thank you guys for giving us the time this morning to kind of present to you on this very important topic as we recognize April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. I have with me today our Children's Services Division Manager Jenna Dykes. We also have a home visitor, Misty Crank, who's very excited to share with you the program that she does on a daily basis, as well as our area manager for the Division of Child and Family Services, Candy Mortensen, and I have you on the side. I'm so sorry. The director of Lyon County, point of special advocates for children, which is CASA for sure. It likes me sometimes. Okay, you gotta click me. I jinxed myself. He doesn't like me today. Since its national designation, April has served as a powerful reminder that the safety and well-being of children is a responsibility we all share. Public and private agencies, community organizations, and concerned citizens come together to shine a light on the issue and to reinforce our collective responsibility to protect children. Child abuse is a community concern, and the responsibility to prevent it belongs to all of us. No single profession, agency, or program can do this alone. Protecting children and strengthening families requires a unified community effort. It's teachers, neighbors, healthcare workers, social workers, standing together to say, not in our community. Unfortunately, the need for this work is very real. According to the data available from the state, the number of reported cases of abuse neglect continues to demonstrate how urgent and ongoing this issue is. If you go to dcfs.nv.gov, they've got a dashboard. You can click around. You can see a variety of different ways to look at this data. I am so sorry that I don't have this updated to include FY24 numbers. While looking at it, this trend line for reasons for removal looks pretty much the same. What I want to point out, though, is that it's never one reason that leads to a removal of a child. It's typically neglect and or parents' drug abuse and. So while physical abuse is the smallest number on there, that could be in addition to something else. And when they look at parents' drug abuse as a reason for removal, meth use still continues to be the number one reason under drug use. After that is alcohol abuse, and then a tiny sliver behind that is opioid use. Next slide, please. And again, I'm so sorry that I don't have FY24 on here, but if you were to look at the FY24 data and even look at what we have available for half of FY25 right now, you would see this trend line starting to do the same thing, but going back up. So twenty-four looked much like twenty-one, twenty-two, with something like forty-eight and thirty-two. So this is showing you substantiated versus unsubstantiated cases. Substantiated means that they opened it for investigation. They went out and they verified that the abuse and neglect and whatever other cause for removal was was valid, that this was indeed happening. Unsubstantiated means they opened the case because the referral or the information or the report was heavy enough to require them to go out, but it turns out through investigation, there was no abuse or neglect taking place. So twenty-four looks like twenty-one, twenty-two, and if you look at twenty-five, gosh, those numbers are going much higher. So you'd be looking more at like twenty, twenty-one is what we're projecting for twenty-five. So we started to come down during COVID. We kind of bottomed out, and now we're starting to see a trend line going back up. Next slide, please. A critical thing to remember when looking at data is that behind every statistic is a child, a life forever impacted. The Average Childhood Experiences questionnaire originally developed through a large-scale study by the CDC and Kaiser Permanente in the nineties. It's a ten-item screening tool that identifies potentially traumatic experiences before the age of eighteen. This includes abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. For each yes response adds to an individual's ACE score. And the original study in the nineties revealed a strong graded link between childhood adversity and a wide range of long-term health risks, including heart disease, substance use, depression, and early death. While it's not a diagnostic tool, the ACE tool helps professionals understand trauma exposure and support early intervention and resilience building. But there is hope. While adverse childhood experiences can leave deep scars, we know that positive childhood experiences are just as powerful. Positive childhood experiences are nurturing relationships and safe environments that help build resilience in children, even when they face adversity. Key PCEs include feeling emotionally supported by family, having caring adults outside of the home, feeling safe at home, and having a sense of belonging in school or community. These experiences help regulate stress, support healthy brain development, and strengthen emotional and social skills. Research shows that even in the presence of high ACE scores, children with multiple PCEs are significantly more likely to maintain good health and well-being into adulthood. So what we're saying is that any adult with a loving, caring relationship outside of whatever that dysfunction is has the ability to significantly outweigh those negative life outcomes. And with that, I want to introduce Jenna Dykes, our Children's Services Division Manager, to talk to you about what we do at Lyon County Human Services. Good morning. I am Jenna Dykes, the Division Manager of Children's Services, Lyon County Human Services. We go to the next slide, and then the next one. So on your screens, you will see a list of our programs on the left. But I want to really highlight all those pictures on the right because that is Children's Services. They are out there every day working with families and children. They are the boots on the ground. They're going into the homes, and they make all of this possible. So on the left, we have a list of the programs in Children's Services, and one of my favorite parts about these programs is they're all preventative programs. And they're also voluntary. So the families we work with want to work with us, and they want to work with the staff, and they want to better their lives for their children. They want to increase those positive experiences and decrease those biases. So the first program on there is WIC or Women Infant Children. This is a program for pregnant women or breastfeeding women, and then children up to age five. We focus on breastfeeding support and education, and then it is a nutrition supplementation program as well. Our Crips for Kids is a quick little class that we deal with families. We talk about safe sleep, how to put your baby back to sleep, the importance of pacifiers and breastfeedings, not wrapping them up in blankets or putting lots of stuffed animals in there. And then once they finish that class, they get a free pack inside, which is a safety-approved place to put your baby to sleep. We also use parcs for families all over the county. We will look at the seat that they have, determine if it is expired, missing labels, broken, too big, or too small for the child. And if we determine any of those things, we're able to give the family a new parc. We also are able to give families parcs if they don't have one, which that happens pretty regularly. We also provide parenting classes all throughout the county. We use an evidence-based curriculum called Active Parenting. It covers children zero to seventeen, so are really able to teach classes to parents specifically for their child. We don't want a parent with a fourteen-year-old taking a class for a two-year-old because they've done that. They don't need that anymore. Along with parenting classes, we do the parent project. We partner pretty closely with juvenile probation. This is a ten-week parenting course that really focuses on those high-risk behaviors that youth are experiencing. Drug use, alcohol, any substance use, running away, truancy, and risky sexual behaviors are really targets those and works with the parents for those youths. I'm going to skip over home visiting because Misty is here, and she'll give you the spiel on what they do and the wonderful program that they have. Differential Response for DR is a case management program for families that we receive referrals directly from DCFS. That a report comes in, DCFS looks over it, and they say, it's not anything that we're going to go out and investigate, but this family could utilize some services in the home. So we go into the home, we see what's going on, how can we prevent this family from being in the DC system? And let's get them those services and help them out. Family support is very similar, but these referrals can come from anyone. They can come from the family themselves, teachers, toddlers. It can come from DCFS, it can come from JPO. We go into the home, we see what they need, we connect them to services, and we provide case management until they no longer need our help, and then we're able to close them. So with that, I will step away, and then I'll do Misty Crank to do home visiting.
Next slide. So on the side is just a bunch of pictures that shows our home visits. My name is Misty Crink. I'm a home visitor with Lyon County Human Services. Our home visiting program is an evidence-based home visiting program. We work with mothers prenatally with their children up to age five. The cornerstone belief of our program is that a parent is their child's first and most important teacher. And our aim is to strengthen that bond between parent and child. So everything we do is to strengthen that bond. Our visits focus on a parent-child interaction, our activities, family well-being, and child development. All activities we do are ones that can be done with objects around the house that the parents have. We explore different parenting topics like how much should our baby be sleeping, potty training, just a wide variety of things. We also do developmental assessments and discuss milestones. So if there is any concerns, we help the parent through that process of finding out what's going on with their child. And we also hold monthly group connections where everybody can come and have a fun activity and play with their kids with other parents in the program.
Our behavioral health coordinator, Todd Cosbix, wasn't able to be here with us today, but as you all know, Behavioral Health Division is the newest addition to Lyon County Human Services. It's still, we call it our toddler. It's about two years old. And when Todd started with us, we really wanted to focus on building up our youth programming first. So we have the widest array of behavioral health services available to our youth. And beginning with the Lyon County Resilient Families, that is targeting the higher age youth, so about twelve up, and their families who are at risk or have opioid involvement. So this is using state opioid dollars to be able to provide those services, doing assessments and connection and linkage to care to the appropriate level of service, if it's inpatient or if it's outpatient, or whatever that looks like. We also have trauma-informed cognitive behavioral health therapy. It is a mouthful. It is an evidence-based modality that allows us to help children and families work through trauma and help heal those scars. Our newest launch, which we knew it was an issue, I don't know if this is good or bad, but our C3 Youth Program, so it's our Youth Mobile Crisis Unit, had a soft launch, and on its very first day, we had five calls. So that is the level of need that we're seeing in the community for youth experiencing crisis. And they have been hopping ever since. So that is a partnership between a case manager and a licensed clinical social worker. They're responding mainly to schools, but they are also responding to homes, and they're sticking with that family past that crisis to make sure that they get connected to long-term care. Now, these next two pieces are not my forte, so I have behavioral health coordinator. However, they utilize tools such as the CASI, the Child and Adolescent Service Intensity Instrument, that helps them identify the level of care need, as well as the Children's Universal Mental Health Assessment, and all of these are to identify the ASAM level of care to make sure that they're getting folks to the right piece. That's the biggest problem when we talk about behavioral health, and I suppose I'm probably taking a side turn on this conversation here. But is that we have this gap. We have high level of care, and we have really low level of care, and we don't have a lot in between. And so it's really important that we don't just filter everybody up to that high level of care, and that's why we run into issues with people not having beds available and things like that. So the services that we're really focusing on is that mid-area and making sure people go to the right place first to avoid that backlog. But I will get off of that soapbox, and we'll get back to child abuse prevention, and I'd like to introduce Candy Mortensen. She works with DCFS, and she oversees the Lyon County area.
Good morning. You go to the next slide. So Candy Mortensen, I am the manager for Lyon County for the Division of Child and Family Services. I have seen a lot of child protective services evolve a lot over the twenty-eight years that I've been working for the state and in Lyon County. But with Child Protective Services, we do assessments, which would be the investigations when we receive reports. We also have our ongoing unit, which is the unit that if we find impending dangers, they work with the family to either get the child back into the home or to keep the child in the home and try and mitigate those impending dangers. We also do have adoptions and foster care licensing, which, you know, as you guys know, I think I toot this horn every year about lack of foster homes. I do want to tell you about one new foster home that we do have in Lyon County. You may have seen it on social media. It's called the Comfort House. And it's a wonderful program. And Gina Armstrong, who is also a school counselor at FIS, is the founder of it, and she runs it. And it's been great because she's seen how important it is for our kids who come out of Lyon County to stay in Lyon County. We work in conjunction with the school district and trying to keep kids in their own homeschools because that's a lot of time. That's where the connections are, and that's where they're safe places. So we are really excited for her home to be up and running. She has a couple of kids that aren't Lyon County kids right now, but she's at least able, helping us with that. So child abuse and neglect, we do everything from neglect, which has a huge umbrella, is lack of supervision. It could be environmental neglect, emotional abuse, you know, mental injury, physical abuse, sexual abuse. You know, those are the wide variety. And as Sheila talked about, I would probably say ninety percent of our reports, whether, no matter whether it's neglect or abuse, most of them do involve some kind of substance, whether it's alcohol, meth, amphetamine, marijuana, even though it's legal, it still impacts our kids. You go to the next slide. Which I talked about there. I sort of jumped ahead. That's what happens. But you can go to the next slide. So like I said, we always need foster families. We have, since last year when I presented, we have been able to not reduce down, but we have actually been able to reduce down some of the numbers of the training hours and make them more online so that we can accommodate more families with all of their needs. And we're able to have a quicker turnaround for fictive kin licensing. So if we have a family and we've removed a child from their home, we look for either relatives or fictive kin. Fictive kin could be a teacher, it could be a coach. And we do try and speed that process up to get them licensed sooner so that they can get some financial help with taking care of the kids that they're taking care of. And so the agency has really tried to make it a little more streamlined and make it more accessible to everybody. You know, and I think that's probably the only thing that came good out of COVID is online trainings. I think that has really opened up the door for a lot of things. So that's my last. And I get to be Steve today, and those are way too big issues for me to play.
You look a lot better than Steve.
Yeah, that's right. Candy would do a much better job than me, but Steve, our district attorney. So yeah, thank you for having this presentation today. We know child abuse is a big problem in Lyon County and across the state nation. So this is an important outreach that we do every month, every year, just to raise awareness for child abuse and keep it in the forefront as we help to protect children in Lyon County. We work with the DA's office, works closely with DCFS on child protection cases, handling the court side of the process and hoping to get children a better place through that court process. Elisa Fogel in our office handles those cases and works closely with the division and the other agencies that are involved. We also work closely with the Lyon County Sheriff's Office on the criminal side. As you know, there are unfortunately a number of cases where criminal charges are filed related to child abuse, and our office handles those, works closely with the law enforcement sheriff's office and the police department, other agencies to handle those cases. Next slide. And as you can see today, from today, the Lyon County is very fortunate that we have a lot of agencies, human services, CASA, DCFS, that are committed to this work. It's very difficult work, but it does help our communities. Appreciate that. Also, the sheriff's office, I don't know if they're part of this presentation, but they play a key role as well in child abuse prevention, working with the agencies that help with those programs across Lyon County. And also the school district, critical link in child abuse, and they've been good to work with to assist in those cases as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mary Smith. I'm with Lyon County Quarterpointed Special Advocates. I've been the director for coming on for years now. Our program and in the mix of everybody else is we recruit, train, and support volunteers to advocate for the kids that are in the foster care system due to abuse and neglect. So what that means is we go out in the community, we get community members. We have Gina Armstrong, like Candy Mortensen. She just opened the Comfort House. She is also a volunteer for Lyon County CASA. We have teachers, we have retired folks, we have working folks all across the spectrum. And what these individuals do is they go through a national training. They also go through a local training, background checks, and annual trainings as well. They meet with these kids, they meet with the families, all of the stakeholders that are involved in the cases, Sheila's department, Jenna's department, the sheriff's department, the DA. And they do a bunch of information gathering and then report directly back to the court. We advocate on behalf of the children in their best interest. We're not an attorney, we're an independent agency and an independent person and a communication for the court. You can go to the next slide. These are our 2024 numbers. We traveled over seventy-three hundred miles to meet with kids, their families, and develop those relationships. We dedicated over fifty-eight hundred hours. That includes volunteers, myself, and also the case coordinator. There's many positive outcomes for the kiddos that have CASAs assigned to them. They're more likely to find a safe and permanent home at the end of the case. That's our goal. We want these kids to be able to thrive, be able to stay within their community, and have that permanency in that safe and loving home. They're more likely to succeed in school. We work very, very closely with all of the schools throughout the district. We are in there and all of their, if they are a special needs child, we are involved in all of their IUP meetings. We meet with their teachers regularly, even if they do not require special services. So these kiddos have a success in their educational setting as well. And they are half as likely, it is shown, to re-enter the foster care system. And our volunteers from the onset of the case, when we are assigned by the district court, our volunteers stay with that child to the conclusion of the case. So we are the one constant that is there from the very beginning to the end. Because a lot of times attorneys will change, social workers will change, placements will change, but here we are, that one constant. So I always say we are in the child's corner from the beginning to the very end. Thank you, guys.
So with that, we're doing lots of things during the month of April, the biggest event being tomorrow. You guys all received an email with the different locations and times. So we're doing pinwheel planting in the four major communities, Dayton, Silver Springs, Yarrington, and Friendly. Yarrington Springs and Friendly are happening at 3:00 PM. Dayton's happening at 10:00. There's also flyers out on the table. So if anybody wants to come and participate tomorrow and help us plant some pinwheels, those will be up all month long. So that way, as folks drive by, they can think of the whimsical childhood we hope all children maintain. And with that, we're open to any questions. And again, we thank you guys for your time this morning.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Hockaday. Question, WIC to age five. Then what does that support look like? I mean, is it really five days in one day, and then they're no longer?
Yeah, WIC is pretty clear on that. So prenatal, so it could be pregnant mamas, and then all the way up to age five. And then on your fifth birthday, your benefits will end. So WIC is a combo program where it is a benefit. You do get a card. You're able to purchase up to a certain dollar amount of different fruits.
You do get a card, you're able to purchase up to a certain dollar amount of different fruits, vegetables and dairy products. And then prenatal moms look a little bit different, but we, it's all about the nutrition to support a developing fetus and then all about the nutrition from infancy up to age five. And that's all focused around the proper nutrition to ensure proper development and all of those critical milestones essentially end at the age of five, which is why that program ends at that point in time. But then SNAP kicks in, other benefits, whilst not as nutrition education focused, because we're also trying to help those kids and families understand proper nutrition that can last a lifetime, right? But benefits themselves and the education ends up.
Any other questions? Any comments? The CASA, the age of the kiddos, is that where the advocates stay with them up to the age of eighteen or how long do they have?
I believe that until their court case closes, though it could be through transitional age. At the age of eighteen, we are terminated if the case is still open.
Okay.
Just kidding, I should note.
Thank you. Comments? Well, thank you for your presentation. I do want to point out that we're all, we're on board today and supporting your efforts, so. Fantastic.
Eighty two is a lot of kids.
We'll move on to the commissioners and county managers' report. I'll start to my left with Commissioner Jethupson.
Thank you. I attended the intended budget meeting yesterday by Zoom. I want to thank Mr. Foley, Mr. Haskin, full staff, department heads, staff, working together and tightening budgets, picking up workloads, et cetera. As we get into a little bleak, hopefully short stint and a bunch of stuff. Tended to set up a college career for everyone. Thank all Lyon County staff that attended, making this memorable and possibly life-changing future employment opportunity for our youth. It's sixty vendors there. It was very well completed by all our kids. So appreciated everyone there. Tended to the Fern and Board of the Road Club meeting. If you're looking for something to do on April twenty sixth, that's our main fundraising event. It's a good time. Three to six PM. Being child abuse and animal cruelty month, I believe there is a young man from Friendly and his family taking on the horses from an animal cruelty case in Silver Springs, while he's a minor and I couldn't mention his name, but want to thank him and his family for stepping up, taking on some of those critters. Maybe out of line here. But one of the two scenarios should never be, and I'm not a lawyer, but Noli Procy Kawai. Looking for DA help, but she's avoiding eye contact. In other words, will no longer prosecute. I believe as part of any plea bargaining deal, these two areas, animal cruelty and child abuse should stay on the record of these individuals seeking a plea deal. Even if it's dismissal without prejudice. I'm off my soapbox. That is all I have.
I'm sorry, Elisa Fogel, deputy district attorney. What was the question? Do you still have one of me?
Pronunciation. Noli Procy Kawai. In other words, no longer prosecute.
Honestly, I don't know anything about the criminal side, but I'll find out for you. So I'm, I'm sorry.
It was strictly pronunciation.
Okay. All right, no other questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hendricks.
Yeah, I attended the USGS thirty year water plan meeting and I did talk to Andrew about this. There's, there's a lot there that's concerning for Lyon County. So we're going to be watching that and I'll keep attending those all the way through and there's a good chance we may have to kind of do some fighting for water rights here in Lyon County and we're prepared to do that. Attended the NACO Board of Directors meeting, the Quad Counties Legislative Coalition meeting and last night attended the State Coach Advisory Board and I wanted to thank Doug for getting people out there to repair the lighted sign after the fiber optics people took out their electric service. And that's it.
Chair of the Kelly, I also attended, sorry, the city council meeting last night and I just, the ladies presented there last night and of course the sheriff is always there, so.
Commissioner Cassinari.
Thank you, Chair. Survived my first budget. So that was, that was good. I was honored to, for the thirty year old judge, the Mr. Dayton High School Contest, which is a fundraiser for the cheer team in Dayton. Always a good, good time. Attended another Dayton Valley Conservation District meeting. And we're finally doing a little movement on the project on the Ritching Pudbury Ranch Bank Stabilization along the river. Promises are still pending. But they were able to move the grants to allow a later start vote. So now that the water level on the river is higher, we're going to move that to a, a late summer start. Tended the Roundhouse Advisory Board. And on behalf of that board, I'll extend a thank you for the basketball hoops. I'm very appreciative of that. Tended the Dayton Advisory Board. And I'll have some things, I'll, I'll probably be coming third from that meeting. Camper held US Highway Fifty Complete Streets Study in Dayton and it was, there was a fetish group for Roundhouse. And nobody attended. I was pretty disappointed. They had Ms. Norman and Mr. Martinovich from Camper and there were some representatives from Andad as well. And it was geared towards the businesses in Roundhouse, which I think we have over two hundred businesses in Roundhouse alone and their employees so that they can give input on the issues and on Highway Fifty through that corridor. But nobody attended, so I was a little disappointed. The, the first two of that study will be completed sometime in July. When we can see the final results on that, there is a what do you call it, thirtieth, likely in Carson City, where they're going to go through some more of that information. Tended the Chili Madness that the Dayton Chamber Commerce held at the Dayton Golf Course. It was a pretty good event. We had about twenty vendors there and about ten chili cooks. And it was a fundraiser. The intended recipients are going to be CASA and the healthy communities of Lyon County. So good event. And then I as you mentioned before, that I'm working with the Sutra Tunnel. They will be having an event later in the summer, the Sutra Social. And we're going to lower the prices of, it's been hard for people to get up there, locals to get up there and tour the tunnel because of the price, you know, it's usually a hundred dollars a person. So we're going to have an event with lower price, encourage people to get up there and tour it, take a look at the reconstruction efforts. You can go almost a hundred and fifty feet into the tunnel now. So we're actually going to have a poker tournament inside the tunnel. So it's going to be a great opportunity. If you haven't seen what's been going on there to get up there, that'd be sometime between May and the end of June. And just want to say thank you to the sheriff's department. We've really noticed around Dayton, the, the traffic patrols, especially on fifty and doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lakenade.
Well, I attended the local emergency planning committee and of course discussed emergency planning. That's what it's for. I also had a marathon joint meeting with the Smith Valley and Mason Valley Conservation Districts. That was a marathon because we reviewed a new personnel manual and all of the job titles and legal aspects that are involved in having a personnel manual. The most fun and best eating time was the Lyon County Health Services Community Survey Meeting, which did occur around the county, but we didn't have a lot of attendance. I know here in Yarrington, we only had one individual show up from from the public. And that was unfortunate because there was enough food for about forty people. Dinner was served. I have to say that the attendees from the county, we all outnumbered the one attendee from the meeting. But Ellen Lopez was there. She was our program analyst. Rihanna Baker, adult services manager, Rebecca Williams, senior services manager, Marika Behring, client services manager for Social Entrepreneurs Incorporated. And I have to say that I believe it was Rebecca's recipe for the meatloaf was really good. So we had a great dinner. I already had dinner before I went there, but I had dinner again because as I said, there was enough meatloaf and French bread and salad for about forty people. I couldn't eat it all. I went to the Smith Valley Citizens Advisory Board. We had a lot of good discussions last night, had excellent presentation from the sheriff's department. And of course, the always delightful handy field budget meeting yesterday. And one quick thing that's going to come up before the next meeting, that would be the Smith Valley Cemetery, the Hill Cross Cemetery cleanup on the twelfth of April. Hope to see a lot of people from Smith Valley after helping to clean up the cemetery and get rid of the weeds. And that's about all I did.
Thank you. I attended the NACO National Rack, the Rural Action Caucus, working on stuff federally. I attended the NACO Association of Counties General Board Meeting. And at that time, I also did the NACO Association of Counties Legislative Committee. Also attended the Black County Legislative Committee. And also attended the Rural Caucus, there with Legislative Committee. Well, our legislative caucus is run by Senator Hanson. So early Monday morning, I got to get up in the morning for that one. I'm just working on the bills. We're looking at, at the bills later this month, next week, I believe. We have to pass the first house and that's when we really start getting into it. I attended the final range and our government executive committee. Pretty much it's just going on with time rules for the, the basic expansions going on out there. The ranchers are being compensated for their grazing and for their land. And I've got to thank, obviously, Namaday for stepping in and making sure that that gets accomplished. I also attended the budget meeting. I attended the USDA GS Water Plan. I've been missing on the community events because at, at the legislative stuff, it seems like we're down there. Meeting with everybody. Also, it's very time consuming. Being with the senators and senior women, but there's a lot of amendments out there. It's kind of hard to keep up, but been working on that. I do want to bring something good that's happening. Twenty twenty five, the US Capitol Christmas tree. So the Christmas tree in Washington DC will be from the state of Nevada. It's the first time that I'm aware of that it's ever happened for the state of Nevada. So that's a, a good thing for us. I'm going to ask the county manager to get it on the website, get it out there, but they need thousand ornaments from the state of Nevada to decorate the trees. And so I'd like to, I'm counting, but to participate as best we can. But there's also fifty other trees. So if you're over in Washington DC at this time, there's every, every building will have a Christmas tree. So it'll all come from the state of Nevada in every, all those buildings. So that's fifty other trees that have to be done. Also, if you go to Washington DC, you, you'll, we go through the travels, especially the tunnel underneath. We have artwork from the children from the different states and, and it's presented there. Well, Congressman Amador has, each from the Congressional Institute sponsors the Congressional Art Competition for high school students nationwide. This is a unique opportunity for students aged congressional district in the county to be recognized for their artistic talent. Our work will be judged on aesthetics, creativity in relation to Nevada. The winning artists will be displayed at the US Capitol for one year. And all the contact information I gave to the county manager, so maybe we can get that out there. And maybe nationally, we can get more recognition for the state of Nevada. That's all I have. So we move on to County Manager Haskin.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County manager. I actually don't have a whole lot for the group between legislature and budget season and everything else that's going on. I I don't have a whole lot today, so. Get up easy. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to elect officials with our store and elected officials reports.
I'm in Lyon County Sheriff Brad Grohl for record. Figure out again, report the month, so I would give you guys one of them. I want to go over a few dates coming up, events the sheriff's office is participating in. On April fifth, at the Smith Valley Hall, will be participating in the meet and greet. On April twelfth is search and rescue bingo night. That is a fundraiser for a search and rescue unit where they, they raise funds to purchase life jackets. And they hand, hand life jackets out at La Haute and other places for free for children. But a drowning death several years ago. And it's been their mission to prevent drowning deaths at Lake La Haute. And since that incident, we haven't had any children drowned and they've been handing out life jackets. Also, on April twelfth, we'll be providing inmates to the Smith Valley Cemetery for cleanup. And April twenty sixth, there's a prescription drug roundup in Dayton. Last I checked, I believe that the city of Yarrington also has a prescription drug drop-off box there. But our main one will be in Dayton this year at the Smith's Shopping Center. Commissioner mentioned traffic stops. Just want to share some data for you for the first quarter. In Friendly, in our Northern Command, we had eight hundred and eighty-two stops in the first quarter. In the Western Command, Dayton Mount House, we had seven hundred and twenty-seven traffic stops. Down here in Mason Valley, we had four hundred and ninety-three. And in Silver Springs, the stage goes with three hundred and thirty. So we're on pace. They have a very good year with traffic stop. In the future, be expecting a MOU from the school district. It's a two-year MOU that puts the Lyon County Sheriff's Office in a position to be the SROs in all of the schools in Lyon County. What's new to that is we will be the SROs in the Yarrington schools starting next school year. So looking, looking for that MOU. It's been signed by the school board. And we'll have that, be able to present that to you here shortly. And I'll just be back for the sheriff's part of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And our elected officials reports. For Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Councilor, for the record, I will be brief because I'm sure you're tired of seeing me after yesterday. But I wanted to make sure, I know it was on the budget calendar that we sent out to the board, but I want to make sure that you saw the final budget meeting is scheduled for May nineteenth, which is a Monday at nine AM. We have to hold it on May, May nineteenth or after. We can't do it on your second meeting, regular second meeting in the month this year. So just want to make sure that works for everybody and we don't have to change that date.
I'm going to be on my way to South Dakota that day. I'm driving to the world meeting. There was talk about extending that out a week from the state. Does that make that any different?
It does not make that way. I can move it back if the board, if if we need to, we have to have it before the end of June. Or before the beginning of June, then in May, because the nineteenth is
The seventeenth, Wednesday, the seventeenth before now.
I can't, it has to be on or after the third Monday in May, and Thursday, May is the nineteenth, but it's interesting. We're gonna have to.
We're actually on the flights. So Tammy Lee and he'll be driving. So if you could.
So are there any dates that you guys have that would be better after May nineteen? Twenty-sixth? That's, isn't that Memorial Day? I mean, I'll, I can be.
It is.
You want the twenty-seventh, twenty seventh?
Twenty-seventh and work for me. I don't know everybody else's calendar.
Nice shot work.
Looks good for me.
Okay. Nine AM, the twenty-seventh of May.
Okay, please send out a reminder.
We'll send out a reminder as well. Thank you. That's all I have for today, or at least for this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Any more appointed officials reports? And moving on to advisory board reports. We're moving to the school general. Actually, we've taken one of the items on matters listed under the consent agenda, but consider routinely reacted upon by the Board of Commissioners, most random actions without extensive hearings. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that a mind to be taken from the consent agenda, discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. We have any requests for anything to be pulled in the consent agenda. CNN, in discussion.
Move to approve the consent agenda, items eleven A through eleven G.
Second, I'll second. A motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Castaneda, so any public comment? CNN, those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Back to the regular agenda. All the advisory board, the possible action point up to one member to the Smith Valley Advisory Board with the term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. We have one application, Rusty Williams. Is Rusty Williams on the, does he want to speak or? There we go.
And the name is Rusty Williams. Actually, the legal name is Charles Williams, but I prefer to go by Rusty. It's me in Nevada. My wife and I moved up here about ten years ago, and I am both thoughtfully and residency in Nevada. And one of the reasons I wanted to go on the advisory board is that I'm concerned with things that happen in our community. I'm not one who will fight against anything that is my own belief. I want what's best for the people in my community. And that's pretty much what I've got. I was an employee and I've been an employer, so I'm both in leadership and committee.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you. Any comments or motion?
I can make a motion. I'd like to appoint Rusty Williams to the Smith Valley Advisory Board with the term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Hendricks. So any public comment? Seeing none, we move to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five to zero. Well, the possible action point up to one member to the Silver Springs Silver City Advisor Board with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. We have one applicant, April Van White. She happened to be here online. Do we have any discussion from the board? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Remove George White, April Van White, to the Silver City Advisor Board with the term expiring December twenty-first, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Do we have any public comment? CNN, move to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Proceed for possible action, line up to one member to the Central Lion Parks and Recreation Board with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Shannon Guest, application. I do have a question about this particular one. Before we get on the road, this is one that is spread throughout the county. And I don't want to end up getting a board that's all one-sided. So I don't know the locations of the people that are on the board now. Are they all from one community or is it spread out?
If you give me just a second.
Okay. Just for information for the board, there is one I'm asking for that, not only that it's that board stretched all the way from Mount House all the way through the Silver Springs. If I'm not on my mind, I mean, supporting someone to be on there so that they have a full board, but if they're all from one area. And then we make a full board. Next year, when one of those come up, and if there's an application to another area, we might be losing someone that's had experience on the board because I'll be voting to at that time to move it out into the area. So that's, I just wanted everybody to have that information. I don't care how it goes out, but.
And I apologize, you have requested that in the past. We'll include it next time in the agenda item. So currently you have three from Dayton, one from Silver Springs, and I believe this applicant is from Dayton as well.
So so I guess I explained the why. If we if we broke this person, next time if someone comes up from the Dayton area and someone else comes up from like stagecoach or something, I'm going to be leaning toward that. So but I don't have anything against this applicant, and they should have a full board. Any discussion? Is that a can here? Shannon Guest? Saying nobody, is there any discussion in board? Make a motion over close, Shannon Guest to the Central Lion Parks and Recreation Board with the term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Second. A motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Do we have any comment? Seeing none, we move to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Bring us to thirteen facilities for possible action. Approve a roof replacement on old courthouse in Lantone, one hundred thousand dollars to be funded by a budget council from the general fund contingency.
Um, Corosworth is getting this Doug Holmes said, open work director, about this lease director for the record. The old courthouse roof has been need to repair for a few years now. And after talking to Andrew and Josh, we figured it'd be best to get it done this year. Because it might be a few years before we even consider having it done. And it's kind of historical building and if your roof is not good, it's going to ruin the inside. So we've only got one estimate so far. We're still trying to get some more estimates, but wanted to get it on the agenda so we can move the project forward. And so we're guessing it's going to be under a hundred thousand, we're hoping. So far, it looks like it will be, but so we're asking for tons.
So just for clarification, a general sales in one hundred thousand dollars. Up to a hundred thousand dollars and for a motion.
I have a quick question. That's on this there. Yeah, so that's a historic building, correct?
Yeah.
Is there historical grants available for that kind of? Are you just?
Any other comment?
Yeah, I don't think it's on the list of historical buildings. It just is a historical building for Lyon County.
Okay, thank you for that certification. I'm guessing the roof replacement would be cheaper than a complete tear down. Any comments or motion?
I'm making a motion to approve a roof replacement for the old courthouse in Lantone, amount of up to one hundred thousand dollars to be funded by budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, move to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Thirteen B for possible action, prove a contract with the Design Workshop Incorporated to develop a master plan for the Mark Twain Park in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred dollars with funding to come from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
I mean, Doug Holmes, facility director for the record. I know it's been Scott's ideas to try to get events to find joy in, and we've talked to two, we contacted three companies, and we only have two that responded. And we interviewed them by Zoom, and then we looked at their some of their websites and some of the cities and counties they worked for. And we came up with having design workshops. They did some work differently, but does a lot of work for Carson City. We felt they had a little better product. And we thought we started off with designing Mark Twain Park, doing a master plan on that. We talked to him about the whole county, the whole central district, and they said we'd be kind of a more generic plan and not a specific plan. And so this is to better lay out the Mark Twain Park. And I think it's a good start in that direction, and then we move on further hopefully.
So we also have a question about team down in Las Vegas. And part of our contract down there is to develop a baseball park in every rural county. So I've reached out for that information, so I'd like that put into that plan. So that we can, you know, come with that in mind. And I've also been in talks with the commissioners from Story County about entertaining, the county manager and the commissioner in Story County about entertaining, if they get funding, if they can't use it there in their their areas, since Mark Twain is so close to ours, and they have people that
They use it once in a while.
Right, so because Mark Twain is Story County on the side. They will be entertained to put some of their funding into our park too. So I don't want to go too far down this rabbit, um, design. Found some information. I don't know if they finalized that contract, so let me get that information to you. I will make a motion to this, but I just want you to have that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any discussion?
I've got a couple of things. So as a general engineering and landscape contractor in my other life, I'm very familiar with design workshop, but very excellent. I've done projects with them. My question is, what, what kind of guidance are we giving them? Is the parks board involved in the?
We haven't set up with them that we're going to have a couple, I think a couple of meetings with the, I think it's first a meeting with Andrew, myself and my folks guy. And then meet with the park board, and then they would come meet with few folks too.
With any community input on this?
We could do that. We have a hard time getting anybody even to anything. I mean, we have a hard time getting anybody to stay on board. So it'd be like the dinner meeting, you have one person there. But they can come to the park for a meeting when they have it on the agenda.
Okay.
I'm also interested if you are lighting design workshop with a budget, because I know a lot of times when we contract with you know, a architect, they might come back with a Cadillac and we can't, can only afford a Kia or something like that. So
I think I'm in our first meeting probably with them. Because right now the park's kind of not designed real properly, so we don't want to put him with, because the park was already approved and we saw a field and all that, and we really don't want to put him in until we have adequate parking, because right now we have a problem with parking. And then the layout of the park, where usually the ball fields are around a centered facility, these are kind of sit and, you know, they're not designed properly. We might possibly, they might say we should take one of them out and redesign it. So we don't want to do much more work in there until we have somebody with professional ability to really tell us what we're doing and what would be best for the community.
Great.
And get the best you saw of our land.
One thing we can do is reach out to the organizations. They have their input to you, you know, how many, how many they, yeah, which way that's trending out there. I know that if we can get lighting out there, especially with the help of a professional baseball team. That would also bring into the the coverage of the parking lot for safety reasons with that same lighting. So we would have to all be kind of
We've got the problem too of what do you need more grass and I have less employees now. So and how we maintain that balance, you know?
Any other questions? I make a motion to approve a contract with Design Workshop Incorporated to develop a master plan for the Mark Twain Park in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred with funding to come from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Carr, second by Commissioner Hendricks. So any public comment? Seeing none, go to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Seeing then go to the vote, those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. By fourteen sheriff for possible action, approve the purchase of patrol office and from the sheriff's office in the amount of. Eleven thousand eighty dollars and eighty eight cents from Franklin to be funded from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Just note that the. The uh the board approved the uh transfer uh of evidence items to county properties. We sold those evidence items for eleven thousand one hundred twenty five dollars and now we're purchasing rifles. Uh, and other equipment for eleven thousand eighty nine dollars. Uh, that eleven thousand one hundred twenty five dollars was deposited into the general fund. Um, so that's a net gain of thirty six dollars from general fund and uh we'd be happy to apply that to fourteen C, so.
Any questions or comments? This is a Douglas County uh corporation, isn't it?
Yes.
Who was keeping it all the money in Nevada? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve purchase the patrol rifles and equipment for the sheriff's office to the. In the amount of eleven thousand eighty nine dollars and eighty eight cents from Franklin to be funded from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Castanelli, do I have any public comment? Seeing none, I move to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Fourteen B for possible action, food master agreement with AT&T and G nine. One one PSAP solutions for renewal of Ryan County Sheriff's Office best telephone system for dispatch. Sheriff.
I really have no comments, just essential function of the uh the dispatch center. Sheriff's Office, emergency services and all for the whole county.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve master arena with AT&T NG nine dash one dash one PSAP. Solutions for renewal of Ryan County Sheriff's Office best telephone system for dispatch.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Castanelli, so any public comment? Seeing none, we move to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Votes five to zero to approve. Fourteen C for possible action, approve the purchase of hardware, support and software license. Licensing for a sheriff's record scanning project in the month of twenty two thousand six hundred forty five. Was coming was funding to come from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
I'm moved to approve the purchase of hardware, support and software licensing. For sheriff's records scanning project in the amount of twenty two thousand six hundred forty five dollars. Worth funding to come from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Castanelli, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Didn't get any input uh discussion from the board, was there any? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Move to the vote, those in favor say aye. Our motion is five zero to pass passes five to zero. Fifteen fifteen A for possible human services for. Possible action, approve a contract between Ryan County. Pacific Behavioral Health and amount of not exceed forty six thousand eight hundred. To provide behavioral health commission services with the trauma focused therapy. TFT and line counter resistant families LCRF programs.
Now again, Dr. Shay Holmes, Director of Ryan County Human Services for the record. Uh, we're excited about this partnership with Pacific Behavior Health. They are approved and currently working within all of the schools in Ryan County School District. So we'll be able to offer these services in school, so you don't have to leave school to get any of the services that we're offering, so. Any question?
Any questions?
Who is the um? Jim Carr, who's the contact and who you work with in the school district?
That's a really loaded question. Typically through Heather Moyle. And her title is one that doesn't make sense to me, so I'm so sorry that I don't know it, but she oversees the counseling services. And so through. Her and an MOU with Healthy Communities Coalition, we're able to go into the schools and do that. So Pacific Behavior Health is already approved on that MOU. So us being able to contract directly with them allows us access without having to go through too many hoops. Although there's a few hoops involved.
Any other discussion? We have a motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract from Ryan County and Civic. Behavioral Health in the amount not to exceed forty six thousand eight hundred to provide the behavioral health co- commission services with the trauma. Focus therapy and Lion County Resilient Families programs. Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Castanelli, do I have any public comment? Seeing none, you move to the vote, those in favor say aye. Motion passes five to zero. Before we move on to sixteen, public count on final items, I'm gonna go ahead and uh take a. Five minute break. It is ten fifteen, so we'll come back at ten twenty one.
Ten, nine. Eight. Seven. Six, five.
Sixteen, public count on final items sixteen A for possible action. We will request from V C J Investors LLC for zoning map amendment. To move the zoning map destination from Title Ten. District five residential twenty acres to Title Fifteen District of. Plus light industrial suburban located at one thirty five Evans Avenue in game for parcel twenty one sixty two acres.
Good morning. For the record, Lisa Nash, senior planners. Good morning commissioners. So we get to the next slide. We're here today to talk about the zoning mass amendment requested by B B. BJ, I'm sorry, is that right? Um, that would change from the Title Ten District of fifth borough residential district. Twenty acres to a Title Fifteen District of Light Industrial Suburban. So you can see where the site is located at one thirty five Evans Avenue and it is. Directly um south of Lake Boulevard and the Dayton Valley Air Park. Access to the site would be from Evans Avenue, which currently terminates on an undeveloped property just directly north of it. So under our master plan, it is located within the suburban character district in Dayton as shown on the left hand map. And on the uh right, you can show see that that entire area is designated as employment under the master plan. So when we look at the master plan land use table, you can see that under employment. R I uh suburban is an allowable zoning and um. It does fit within the character of that area considering there's industrial uses between uh their property and the airpark. So when we look at the zoning for the property, the zone would change the entire hundred and sixty two acre parcel to the zoning of light industrial suburban. As you can see in the uh proposed on the right hand side. This is consistent with all the other parcels adjacent to the north. The property is surrounded by um other RR. Five or RR twenty under Title Fifteen and the property surrounding it all in pink is BLM property. Uh, to the east, west and south. And then that little corner that it touches, which is heavy industrial suburban to the southwest is a current gravel quarry. So there's very little likelihood of uh additional residential development coming in here, at least unless BLM was to swap some land or to, you know. Uh. Sell it off and the gravel quarry to the southwest being heavy industrial, this isn't uh an incompatible use there. So one of the items I want to go into, which we normally don't look at too much in a zone map amendment though, is the public facilities. Although the project is within the suburban character district, it's within employment, which generally comes with water and sewer. This parcel itself is not within the Lion County Utility Service area. So it is directly adjacent to the property to the north and there is existing water and super su- services located. Directly adjacent to the north, but it isn't within that district. So the applicant is in the process of requesting annexation. Into the Lion County Utility District. Um, the utility district is working with them on the annexation. This, they've had to, it's been a little slow starting because they've had to look at how do we do this, is this is not a GGID. The utility district isn't, and they haven't done many, they haven't done any annexations, so they've. Been working with the DA to figure out how do we profess on that and they have decided. That the the path forward is to treat it as a GGID, so at some point in the future, they'll be coming before you all to. Uh, look at an annexation into that department or into that district. So um. One of the things that. We need to consider as well, though, if the annexation isn't approved, the applicant still has the right. Even within this district to put in a well and a commercial septic system. So the property can still be developed. In any case, whether or not the annexation goes through. So it's something to consider when we're looking at the zone map amendment, is there is the ability to provide services to this property, whether it's privately. Or annexed into the Lion County Utility District. So when we move on to the findings, um. I want to point out that um the under A, normally I don't go into too much detail, but I'm gonna go over this pretty quickly. Um, we look at the policies that this could apply to this and do they meet the findings and there are a particular. Um, there are three that really apply to this in that policy FS one point one is the location of new development. And that says that it occurs in an area that is served by or adjacent to areas with an existing utility to avoid distant and costly extensions. So this does, and this could also help with um. Though we need to at some point, that water system needs to be looped in that area, which will improve service to everybody. And this can help provide additional funding and support in doing an activity like that. Um, also, policy LU one point four locate industrial development is designated on the countywide land use plan. Um, it is located in an area that doesn't adversely impact any residential settlements, anything proposed or existing. Additionally, it meets policy LU three point two business and industry locations that are consistent with future land use plans. Um. Encouraging industrial development where public facilities exist or are planned to accommodate such developments cost effectively. Due to the fact that this is already in a suburban character district, it's in employment, it is logical that it is a natural. Place to extend and continue annexation of the Lion County Utility Department. Yeah, moving on.
Come on if I interrupt.
Not at all.
I'm just curious, what would the hookup fees to the uh utility district, what would those run on something like this?
Yeah, um, I don't know, but I think Andrew.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Management, that really depends on what the use is and the size of the connection. That's not really the answer that I can. Provide off the top of my head without a project in front of us.
So I'm guessing a commercial well on septic, commercial septic would not be cheap either.
I haven't priced that out, but I uh I imagine you are correct.
I have a question on that same same thing is is normally would you? Uh, before annexation, would you normally push something like this through when we don't, they don't have the annexation into the district and. Is that harsh before the court hit a court here or what's our normal policy?
Well, we don't have one for Dayton because we haven't been in this situation before where it's depended on annexing in. However, that's why I brought up the well and the commercial septic as a viable alternative. Normally, I wouldn't bring something forward that I didn't feel. Had alternatives, but this can go either direction. And if I may add, yes, commercial. Uh, septic are very, very expensive, so and I take a lot of permitting through the state and long term maintenance, so. It is to their benefit to hook into the system at some point if they can. They also have an alternative that say because part of the looping that would need to take places through BLM lands, that can be a long. Process. They have an option if they wanted to move forward with a well and septic to later be abandoned. Although that definitely would be a much more expensive option, it still does exist to them. So I feel they do meet the public utilities requirement. Of the findings because they have. Multiple options, then it doesn't oblige us in any way, in my opinion, that we would have to accept an annexation.
Well, my my concern was the annexation would allow them to hook up to the to the utilities. But if not, it is a. Another septic system out there, commercial septic system direction the county wants to go into that area or not. Because. It 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 creates problems in itself.
It absolutely does, and it's something to be considered during the annexation process.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I was wondering about the. Procedure here for the county. Go go ahead. Finish it.
Okay, thank you. So this item, and please interrupt me at any time during my presentations. I don't mind. It helps to discuss the items. Um, during the March eleventh planning commission, it was approved unanimously to recommend it. Date, make a recommendation or approval to the Florida County Commissioners based upon the findings. And there was uh no public comment or concerns about this mainly because. Um, we don't have a project yet, so we don't know what the use of the land would be. The applicants don't have a project in mind. They're just moving towards that direction and. With the lack of residential development adjacent, it is very appropriate and probably. Might have been something that could have been considered the last time the master plan was updated. Having RR twenty in employment is kind of like income income growth, so. Um, I am here for any other questions.
I I have a question. One of the things when we're doing rezoning, I'd like to see a list of what is straight up permitted under new. Under the new designation so that we can see what all the possibilities could be. Of what could be done there without requiring any kind of a CUP or anything like that.
Um, okay, I can definitely make a note to add that in the future. Um, in general, any larger. Warehouse is anything like that would require CUPs in it a minimum. They require ADRs on anything on industrial. But I will make a note of that and we'll try to include that for your information in the future.
Because this packet, they said they don't have a project, but in the documentation, it keeps saying data center, data center, data center.
I think that's what they anticipate. There's no project lined up. Okay, so there'll probably be something just like everything else in that area warehousing and data center. Light industrial does allow some light manufacturing and some other uses, and I can see where that would be very helpful.
What's the uh anticipation of getting into the annexing? What's the time? Maybe.
Yeah, process, do you want? Let me let the the applicants here, if you don't mind, let them answer that because they've been in discussions and I haven't been.
Thank you.
Uh, hi, Dan Birchfield on behalf of the applicant. So um, yeah, we we made the the submittal. Um, back in, I I believe it's in January. And so as soon as possible, um, I know the the last I had heard. Um, from the utilities department, we were at the stage where the DA was trying to figure out. Uh, how to handle the annexation, because this is the first one that they had. Um, and so once we got past that, the next step um was to have the county engineer. Do the water modeling to to see what system upgrades may or may not be needed in order to serve the parcel. Um, and then that's all all part of the annotation process. So I mean, the applicant, it's the applicant's desire to. Annex in the service territory for sewer and water. And to do it as quickly as possible. So I mean, our hope is to to have that done, you know, as soon as it was. The utilities department's ready for us.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the time limit on that because one thing, that's a hundred sixty eight acres. And that's a lot of what if it's a data center, that's one thing. It opens up to, it could be a lot of different things if they don't get power for the data center because we're just doing the zoning overall blanket. And that could be a lot of sewer out there. And I don't know if the county wants to. Without the annexation are completed.
I think would it be okay for this?
Good morning, Chris Baker, Mid Heart Consulting, I have the advocate. Um, I get, I think I want to get it that the main concern of the annexation. I mean, I understand it's it's the first one that's actually occurred. What we do is with the. I mean, the reason we're in in front of you today, right, is we have kind of a disconnect between your master plan and your underlying zone, right? So we're really just kind of fixing a mapping here as a part of that, though. We bring up this annexation and utility and timing. Um. What needs to be brought up too is the fact that this is in the suburban character district. Your master plan has policies in place that require public utilities, right? So yes, we could. So yes, we could do, you know, commercial septic and. And a well, um, obviously that would only be if the county couldn't serve us, so at this point, really, the, the scenario would be to. Go through the annexation process, which is. The county's in the process, I understand, it's coming up with, okay, what is necessary to serve you, right? And then that goes forward in an annexation agreement, that's, hey, are these improvement costs are the burden of the applicant? Um, and then what happens is that agreement gets, you know, entered into, and then we go forward and, and then the, the line changes. I don't think it's premature to go forward with mapping, because there isn't a project now, but moving forward with anything that still would have to. Be required to meet any underlying codes in any underlying master plan, which requires you to hook up to public utilities.
Thank you, uh. County Manager, uh. I don't know if it would be her or you, as far as, so is there significant guidelines that if we move forward with this, that we're not creating a. Feature problem with the sewer district?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I don't, I believe we have a lot of, uh. Protection moving forward, being annexed in doesn't guarantee them the service until it can be provided, and right now, especially in Dayton, we've had. You know. We're not hooking a lot of new businesses up, and this is. Going to be, this is at the bottom of the list, it's coming in now, so it's not guaranteeing them service, it's just bringing them into the district where they could get service. If service can be provided. Did I say that?
No, no, Andrew Haskin, my county manager, so I think to address Commissioner Keller's question about that, um. Is there, that was to make sure that they have to connect into the sewer service, so, um, and, you know, as, um. Mr. Baker pointed out that it is a requirement in the master plan in this character district. I know the current zoning is RR twenty, which is one house per twenty acre minimum. Um, so a hundred and sixty acres you would. Under the current zoning, the maximum potential would be eight homes, right? So it's a lot of work to go through all the studies and everything to prove that, that they can be annexed into the. The sewer service district if that's the, the highest development potential, so it's kind of a risk for the developer if they're, um. Going through all of that prior to having the zoning for what they want to do. Just another perspective to think about.
Can we go back to the slide that showed room zoning, I just had a clarification on. Yeah, so. We said the pink area was BLM, correct? Um, is it the BLM that's?
It is.
Andrew Haskin, line came in, so pink doesn't necessarily denote BLM on this, although all the pink around there is, uh, you know. Just want to provide that clarification, the pink on the map is RR twenty.
So in the budget, can we get to more colors or something? That was, that was real confusing to me, so, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Trying to draw based on, uh, the firm, a firm mentioned findings, they will see a move of, uh. The Board of County Commissioners approves the request by VBC jury investors LLC for a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning map. Designation from Title ten district of, uh, or five. Uh, fifth of, of Royal Residential District twenty acres. To the Title fifteen district of LA, has an S, light industrial suburban. Located at one thirty-five Evans Avenue in Dayton for a parcel totaling one hundred, uh, one hundred sixty-two acre. One hundred sixty-two point zero six acres, APN zero one six. Half and three one, half and zero four, PLZ two thousand twenty-five, half and zero zero one. Before I go for a second, I, I want, because it's a planning issue, I usually go to public comment before we make a motion. In case you might want to make a different motion from after public comment, so, uh, is there any public comment? Soon, then I'll entertain a second. We got a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, uh, second by Commissioner Hendricks, wasn't favor say aye, uh, motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sixteen B for possible action to approve a request for abandonment of two sixty-foot wide. Access easements as granted on land maps seventeen, two, seven, seven, nine, four, four, one, two, six, nine. Six, seven, 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 three, six, situated on Assessor's Parcels number. Sixteen four one ninety-seven, sixteen four six twenty. Located within the Traditions Commercial Subdivision in Dayton.
For the record, we can ask, senior planner. Um, we could go to the next slide, so the applicant is. Uh, well, let's start, the site is located off north of Highway fifty, um, at Traditions Parkway in Dayton. The two easements are shown on the plan here that are in the white half areas, and, um. They extend northward from Highway fifty. There were three recorded parcel maps that had these easements on them, and the first one is the small, uh, piece that is on one, seven, two, seven, seven, nine. This was the access easement that was planned off of Highway fifty on the original parcel map. And then we go to the next two, which, um, are shown on the. Screen, and these slides show where the easement that stretches all the way up from. Highway fifty to properties to the north, uh, located on APN zero and six, four oh six twenty on the original parcel map.
Thank you.
So when we look, these are the applicant's exhibits that they'll record, uh, A one and B one, A one is on the right and, or on the. Left and B one's on the right, um. The, uh. Exhibit A one on the left shows that full north-south alignment, and the map on the right shows the shorter piece off of highway that's on the, the smaller parcel. I included this side, this is the draft final parcel map that is currently under review with the county. And what I've highlighted on the screen there shows where the new alignments will be with the roads that are in on this, uh. This parcel, so the new easements will be located where, uh, Traditions Parkway currently attaches to Highway fifty. Or comes off of Highway fifty, and then the curving road going up to the north, that terminates at the same place where the old one does. So we don't affect any, uh, right of ways off-site, it still connects and it provides that roadway, um. The, uh, this is, is ensuring that there's no offsite effects from the abandonment of the existing easements. Um, again, this is something that you could be taking care of normally at a tentative phase, but. Uh, removing a road access easement requires a hearing, so it can't be done, it's final, and a lot of times we don't catch these fully until the engineers are reviewing at the final stage. So that's why we're here today, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and, uh. Chris is also here, if you need anything for the athletes.
No comments? Looks like they're just cleaning up the project, the site, uh, that one, you were forty-five angle that's going out, there's actually tying into the next piece of parcel. Not onto a road or anything, so.
Nope, it's not developed, it's just making sure we don't leave a property, uh, with no access.
They're gone. See, land. When we tell our community, most on the firmage and findings A through D. I know that the Board of County Commissioners, of course, the request for abandonment of two sixty-foot wide access easements. As granted on land maps, one, seven, two, seven, seven, nine. Also four, four, one, two, six, nine, and six, seven, 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 three, six. Situated on Assessor's Parcels numbers APNs, zero and six, dash, four, zero, one, dash, nine, seven. And zero and six, dash, four, zero, six, dash, two, zero, located within the Traditions Commercial Subdivision. In Dayton, PLZ, two thousand twenty-five, dash, zero, and three, subject to the following conditions. One and two as agendized. Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Those in favor say aye, motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This brings us to seventeen, for possible action, proves a master service agreement between Dow and. I'm sorry, we pulled that one, well, I'm sorry, I do have that one. Seventeen B for possible action, proves a selection of an engineering firm for the professional services agreement. Related to engineering service for the Silver Springs Airport and authorized staff to negotiate and finalize the agreement, subject to review and approval by the Land County Board of Commissioners.
All right, so good morning, Commissioner Gavin Henderson, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record, um. Starts off, the community development department seeks approval of the selection of an engineering firm that provides services under a newly executed professional service agreement. And that agreement is for engineering services for the Silver Springs Airport. Um, so this presentation just goes some historical background and a review of their best qualifications and the process, the timeline. Um, our evaluation process, as well as the evaluation summary, and then lastly, just staffs recommendation based on the scoring results. So first one, just take a moment and, uh, provide some, again, historical background, um, so Lyon County's current agreement for professional engineering services. Um, with Silver Springs, Silver Springs Airport, so Lochner, formerly known as, known as Armstrong Consultants. Um, has been working with the county since December nineteen, um, two thousand nineteen, providing arrangement engineering services for the Silver Springs Airport. Um, their work has included grant management, um, stakeholder coordination, um, design and engineering, construction support. Playing in environmental compliance and as well as the different engineering services. Um, so the RFQ process helps us find the most qualified firm, um, this is not based on cost, but on ex, expertise and experience, um, for complex support projects. That we issue in our capability pool of qualified firms, and then from that pool, um, we go in and review them accordingly to the RFQ and then select the highest ranked. Um, some key functions that the county was looking for are revolved with issue in the RFQ included engineering design, so FAA compliant airport infrastructure. Permitting assistance, construction, um, support, again, stakeholder coordination, which was huge, uh, for the airport, um, grant procurement, which is also a big factor. Um, because a lot of what we do out there is grant funded through the FAA. Um, and the main goal is to ensure compliance with these FAA policies and regulations and enhance the safety and then, uh, establish some long-term development standards for the airport. Next, I just wanted to briefly touch on just the general RFQ timeline, so this is just a list of dates and kind of the process that the county went through. In order to get here today, April third, uh, for the board selection. Um, so the evaluation process, uh, so we, we received two statements of qualifications, um, in response to RFQ. One from Lochner and one from Eastern C R Engineering, um, to ensure fair and objective selection process. Uh, we use a structured evaluation based on four key criteria, so we have firm experience, key personnel. Proaching methodology, methodology, and then references, um, a three-person scoring panel, uh, made up of department heads. Independent review, then score each submission, um, again, the firm with the highest cumulative score is then recommended to the Board of County Commissioners, um, final approval. Final approval. Um, valuation summary, um, so the firms were evaluated based on those, again, those four key criteria. Um, ranking number one is shown in the table and outlined in the green. Um, but fifty-eight points was Lochner, they had the strongest qualifications overall, excelling in both firm experience and then, and key personnel. Um, Eastern C R Engineering fell below Lochner with forty-nine points. Um, they performed strongly, particularly in key personnel and firm experience, and then received excellent references as well, um. So that's just the summary of the, the evaluation process and, uh, uh, just the overall summary of how we got to, uh. Where we are today, and then, uh, here's a recommended motion based on, uh, the scores, um, and the rankings. Uh, if we move forward, um, just some generalized next steps, pretty, uh, pretty familiar, um, same steps as we went through with the NSA. Uh, after this, for a meeting, we then go and proceed, working with the District Attorney's Office and the selected, uh, firm, um, to go and, uh, negotiate that agreement. Uh, and with that being said, um, any questions, comments, concerns?
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yeah, um, the list of litigation at the end of their submittal, I need you to tell me why I shouldn't be worried about that.
Um, so that was all pending, um. Again, it was. I'm not sure why you shouldn't be worried about it, um, I know. Uh, we have some folks in Lochner today, if they wanted to speak on the cap of that, um. They were very, uh, open in providing all that information, which we appreciate, and there's spoken transparency there, um, none of those affects Lyon County directly. Uh, but there is, you know.
We'd be willing to come up and kind of speak to that, please.
Good morning, I'm Mike Dickon with Lochner, um, I honestly don't know the answer, but I will tell you that when we started. Uh, Armstrong was acquired by Lochner, which is a very large national firm. They have rail, transit, highways, water projects, all kinds of things, so. I believe you're seeing a list of everything that a very large company has involved, had been involved with across the United States. Uh, we as Armstrong, when, when we did this five or six years ago, I don't think there was anything involved, I. So I honestly, I don't know the answer, but I think it's simply the size and scope of the company, um, those kinds of things ultimately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. It's just got bought out by.
Yeah, we, we, an aviation-specific firm, um. Fifty years in business, and then we were acquired two years ago by Lochner, he's growing a large national practice. Um, and so, uh, we're, we're truly still. Working together to learn how to best maximize the value that that brings, but our staff and our service to you is based on. Our history of aviation expertise.
So you're familiar with the airport, and we're going to keep that same.
Extremely so, yeah, actually, yes, uh, I, I'll tell you, sir, I can tell you, sir, it's that.
Oh, I, I lived there, I know.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions? Or comments? Any public comment? Soon, done, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the selection of Lochner for the professional services agreement related to engineering services. For the Silver Springs Airport, S P Z, and authorize staff to negotiate and finalize the agreement. Subject to review and approval by the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners.
We have a second. Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hockaday, those in favor say aye, uh, motion passes five to zero. Brings us to seventeen C for possible action, approve the selection of a planning firm for the professional service agreement related to planning services. The Silver Springs Airport, not, and authorize staff, staff to negotiate and finalize the agreement. Subject to review and approval by the Lyon County Board of Commissioners.
So Gavin Harrison, I can't explain without direct to correct again, um, so again, we're seeking, um. Approval of selection of a planning firm to provide some, um, services for Silver Springs Airport again. Um, to reduce a lot of the redundancy in, uh, that presentation, or I did remove, the timeline was the same, the violation criteria was the same. Um, the whole process was the same, the only difference here is the scope of services, um. And, uh, I will add the caveat that we only received one qualified submission, um, so there was only one submission to go through the ranking process. Uh, so this one should be a little bit more condensed with qualification, uh, so. It's not a neat job, driving over. Uh, so really briefly, just wanted to touch on the difference between scope services, there are, um, some overlapping, uh, with regards to stakeholder engagement. Grant procurement, but the biggest thing on the, the planning side of things is, uh, again, overall planning and development airports. Uh, so that's, um, identifying potential hangar locations, updating the airport layout plan, and any sort of master plan documents to remain compliant with the FAA. Um, next biggest one is the environmental assessment and compliance, so that involves conducting environmental assess, assessments, ensuring compliance with all the. Um, environmental agencies involved and, uh, their regulations and preparing, preparing that necessary documentation to, for to the FAA for that grant. um, environmental agencies involved and, uh, their regulations and preparing that necessary documentation to forward to the FAA for that grant funding. Um, other than that, the remaining three permitting assistance, coordination with stakeholder engagement, and the grant grant procurement services are all the same as the engineering services scope. Um, again, briefly, wanted to touch on our evaluation summary. So we did run through the whole gamut, even though, uh, we had one submission. Uh, so Lochner accumulated a total score sixty. They demonstrated, you know, strong qualifications, solid approach to the project, and met all our Q expectations, you know, as the sole qualified respondent, uh, Lochner was identified as an eligible firm for the project. Uh, so again, staff recommendation would be done, the selection of Lochner, and then I'm here for any more comments, questions, and so.
Do we have any questions or comments? Any public comment? See, and then I'm entertaining motion.
Motion to approve the selection of Lochner for the professional services agreement related to planning services for the Silver Springs Airport, and authorize staff to negotiate and finalize the agreement, subject to review and approval by the Lion County Board of Commissioners. That's us.
That was it. A motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Castanari. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Seventeen B for possible action, approved task order G as a, and tandem to the airport improvement plan. Project number three thirty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-three. For the rehabilitation of taxiway A located in the Silver Springs Airport, not not to exceed twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars with a counting match of one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Go ahead.
So previously, we had a project at Silver Springs Airport for, uh, it was a crack ceiling of the runway and taxiway A. Um, that project roughly reluctantly would have finished through material shortage. Um, so this contract addendum is to provide, um, those, uh, project management services to, um, complete, uh, their remaining crack ceiling out of the Silver Springs Airport. Uh, the overall addendum was twenty-three thousand dollars seven hundred and ninety. Uh, the FAA currently, uh, required a five percent match, so that's why the county matches one thousand one hundred and ninety. It was six and a half percent prior, but they did, um, move it down five percent.
Do you have any comments, questions? I have one question. Uh, who does the inspection on that? Is our road departments or? You guys do it. Okay, because I've noticed in the past that if you go down the roads, I'm around to do some of that stuff, and airports are completely different, so. Thank you.
Yeah, it is a little different scenario out there too, because there are some, uh, engineered saw cut joints in the pavement. Um, so those do take a lot more crack sanding to actually do.
Seeing the questions.
Yeah, so this is, uh, not to exceed twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. I'm looking at the, uh, element one, scope of work. Under one point four. It's saying estimated construction cost for element one is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Are you looking at the addendum?
I don't know if that is a different. It's saying, um, on page two of twelve. Element one, movement maintenance. Estimated construction cost of element one is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So that is for the entire project.
So that's the entire project. Okay. Thank you.
More questions? Comments? Any public comment? See, I'm taking a motion. It's your chance to get on the minutes.
Move to approve task order G as an addendum to the airport improvement plan, A I P, project number three dash thirty-two dash zero zero two three dash zero two three dash twenty twenty-three. For the rehabilitation of taxiway A located at the Silver Springs Airport, in a amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars with a counting match of eleven hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll second that, so. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Keller, doesn't favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. This is the county manager, eighteen A, for possible action, approve the adoption of Lion County Lobbying Policy and Associated twenty twenty-five legislative principles. From the eighty-third session of Nevada Legislature. And this was brought back to us, so.
And you're asking my county manager, happy to answer any questions. Um, Ms. Allison is at the legislature today. There was a court hearing she had to be at, so unfortunately, she is not here to answer your questions. I'll do my best.
Any questions? I I do have one, but if somebody else wants to ask questions before we get to it. I'm trying to find that spot where, uh, it says, uh, county officer compared to the board. So it says includes any elected or appointed official. And right under definitions.
Okay.
So that includes, uh, elected and appointed. And then, um, in the policy, and this was by why we brought back is because we're elected officials and we we didn't want to have that constraint. It says, uh, the Nevada State Legislature is committees, individual legislature, employee. I thought it said the same. County officer. It did. I thought I said it was still in there. Looks like you changed it. Yeah, I'm good. I I I thought it was, I've been everyone that I was reading before.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that no elected official was included in on that, because I don't know how we regulated elected officials. They have their own voice. That's the only thing I have, so. Entertaining motion.
Move to approve the adoption of a Lion County lobbying policy and the Associated Twenty Twenty-Five Legislative Principles for the eighty-third session of the Nevada Legislature. As presented.
So I got. I have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Castanari, those in favor, probably all the comment. Those, okay, I'm going to the vote. Those in favor say, oh, are you stepping up for paper comment? Now to go to the vote, those in. Those in favor say aye. Okay, that says five zero. Brings us to eighteen B for possible action, to to use the concrete retaining wall in Silver City Park for community mural.
Um, I'm Meg Burns with Silver City Preservation Society, uh, where I work, I work in C three, uh, nonprofit corporation in Silver City, and, uh, with the support from the Nevada Arts Council. We're sponsoring an arts learning project to create a community mural. So I'm here to request use of that wall that's, uh, thoroughly, I think it was a weird. I think while they're in our, in our park, where we do the basketball court. Um, so we hired a professional arts group with, uh, experience and education to facilitate the project. We had, uh, a, um, we've, we've done five design sessions, immunity sessions so far. Um, and the the design is fairly well completed. Um, the, it started with a presentation by, uh, Dr. Elston. I don't know if you know him, he's our neighbor and a prominent archaeologist, and he gave a history of the area that was really well attended. We had over twenty-five people there, and at that time, we gathered uh, information and desires from the residents about what they thought should be included in a community mural. And it found the three basic themes. The, uh, natural environment, celebrations of community, and important landmarks. And the way we do it, uh, is, you know, it's really a long skinny wall. Um, gets to be about six foot high in the middle, and maybe three and a half at the that far right edge. Um, so the design, uh, it's, it's it starts with a ridge line was taken from a panorama of all the hills surrounding Silver City. So all of our favorite landmarks in the view shed are there. And then it it kind of, it's a loose timeline from, uh, left to right there, starting with the prehistory and going through the mining era. And then, uh, into the, the, um, area that was really important to most people involved, which was the, uh, the, uh, revitalization of the the town in the sixties and seventies. And some of the landmarks there, and you can see, it's hard to see, but there are nine, like, window frames. And in those, there's going to be, um, uh, elements from that we wanted a larger to have a a good visual um, representation of what what we wanted in the mural. Um, this is from the natural park, the Great Basin Wildry. Uh, and then the cemetery is an important feature in our town. Um, okay, the next one. This, uh, is just this basic sketch. It will be fleshed out, but, um, it's the Golden Gate Bar and, uh, one of the old fire trucks. Having, uh, references to the, the volunteer fire department feel important to many people there. Um, next is, uh, the Tahoe Beer Bar. Uh, was an important, so. Gathering place for people. Uh, next. And then we have several that are natural environment. Um, now we, you know, we're very rural and we, uh, all, many of us love the wildlife and the hills around are important. Um, the square. They've really been good this year. There's been, uh, many, many families have played on, and it's. Oh, that's it. Okay.
Sounds all right.
All right. Okay, let's go. Anyway, this, that's, uh, the plan we have. Uh, there's a few sections that are still, um, just window frames. It'll be in the same style. One will be the devil's gate. It'll show the devil's gate with, uh, um, a Wookiee up village in the background. And that'll be in the prehistory section. Um, we did get, uh, approval from the Comstock Historic District. They were very excited about the project. That would be a great addition to our community. Uh, we've been pretty excited about the participation. It's been, especially in this day and age where it's hard to get people to to come out and join in things. So that that's been great. It's, um, painting is planned for uh, June, and we're beginning that, um, um, public outreach to make sure we we get uh, a lot of people involved in that part of it. I've already heard a bunch of people who are interested. We want to get the, uh, really reaching out to youth to be involved in that that part. So that's pretty much all I have.
Make sure it changes it. Make sure, um, so when was this? A building was called the Silver Palooza.
The Silver Palooza is going to be on June twenty-first, so.
Will this be done by then?
We, uh, our goal is to have that done by then, because that'll, uh, I think it'd be a really good draw.
Right.
We hope to have an opening, uh, uh, kind of a reception opening before then. You, uh, we'll ribbon cutting.
Off there.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Do you forward us a picture of the finished product when it's done?
For sure, yeah. And you're all welcome, of course, to come to the opening and see it, uh, in person.
Commissioner Castanari. Uh, thanks for the presentation today. I, um, I know you having all the, the, uh, ramble problems up there like we do in other parks around the county, but, um, I I was, uh, uh, I didn't see on here if they intended to install an anti-graffiti coating over.
Yes, it'll be a sealant, um, coating it.
Okay.
To protect it from the weather and also from vandalism.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And you might want to have a camera up there because they're going to try. And we have it all across the county and, you know, across the state, across the country. They're going to find a way, and if we can identify them, that's great, but you hate to be the negative. Don and I are being negative on this, but just want to make sure that it stays nice.
You know, yeah.
Want to go question? So is there any long-term planning to, uh, because with all murals, they could not look as good as the day they were put up? Are there long-term, uh, do you got it?
Planning to have, yeah, touch up. Party.
Because, uh, in my opinion, is if it starts getting to be where it becomes an eyesore or something like that, then I would recommend the county to paint over it so that it didn't look um, graffiti. So if you guys can keep a plan going.
Yes, for sure. And we we do that, and, um, hopefully, if there was a complaint about it, being an eyesore, we would hear about it first before came in painting over.
Any more discussion?
When I make a motion to approve, uh, to use the concrete retaining wall in Silver City Park for a community mural.
Check it. We have a motion on the second. Those in favor say aye. All right, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Eleven twelve, um, is anybody willing to take a break? This one's going to probably be discussed for a little bit. Okay, can we move on? Eighteen A for possible action, review and provide direction with county manager, whether to draft and bring forward a resolution requesting the creation of a commercial property assessed clean energy, C-PACE program to provide the means of financing, running more energy efficient improvements projects for new energy projects, water efficiency improvement projects, or these low-income projects for qualifying commercial or industrial real property, request by Brett Lovett. Go ahead.
Good morning, Brett Lovett, Mineral Height Department, Silver Springs. Um, I'm not the finance guy of the world, but, uh, I'm a developer, and we had, uh, financing approved for our apartment community in Silver Springs. And, uh, a portion of that came in through what is called the C-PACE financing program. Um, we then discovered in October that Lion County had never opted in to the C-PACE program. So I sort of become just the linchpin to push this, um, so that we can get our project up off the ground, but probably this is not just for us. This is for, you know, all projects that we're looking at doing in Lion County and other developers as well. On the Zoom call today, we have Phil Kellogg, um, he's with C-PACE Alliance out of Washington, D.C., oversees all the other states. We have Brian McCarter, which is the C-PACE administrator, who would be administrating this program for Lion County, as he says, for Reno and Fernley and Las Vegas and Clark County and Purging County, all the other locations within the state. Uh, Frank Swain, uh, from Pace Equity is also, uh, attending today, and we have a lot of other supporters of the program. Uh, so I'm really here as a developer trying to get a project built, and, uh, this is this C-PACE financing for a developer trying to do projects in a small county, um, is a game changer for us. Because it allows us to bring this money into what we call our capital stack into our equity portion up above, uh, which means our construction lender is then, you know, normally at a fifty percent loan to value, and then they're in first position. And it allows us to get financing for projects, uh, in small rural areas, which are normally harder to find. Um, so, uh, you know, we have a lot of questions today, and I'd like to, um, leave the questions to the experts that are, you know, here to answer whatever we could. So I thank you for taking the time today to hear.
Um, Commissioner, thank you. Very good to the, I guess, uh, experts. Um, you mentioned projects in front of me. What what projects do you have in front of me?
No, I mentioned Fernley's already approved the C-PACE. No, I mentioned currently he's already approved the CPace finding this resolution. And there's two or three projects that uh maybe Frank and them can discuss, they're actually looking at it currently now, but the resolution's already been approved by the friends.
Thank you. Any other questions before we go to the experts? I have one question, who's the guy with Washington DC?
Uh Cliff Kellogg, CPace Alliance.
The question I have, Roy, is looking at the LTV or the loan to value at a thirty percent property value that. Didn't seem like a real, really, you know, good loan. To me, when you look at it, as you know, a lot of them, you get seventy-five percent of your loan and you pay twenty-five, you're looking at thirty percent. Loan and you're going seventy percent, so you're.
They come in uh with thirty percent of the loan to cost. And that goes into the equity stack, so then behind, well, not behind them, in front of them is then the construction lender. Who comes in at forty-five to fifty-five percent uh construction cost. You know, so we're still borrowing eighty percent, eighty-five percent of loan to cost to build the project. Uh but uh we have a lot of problems, you know, finding financing around the country that'll come into a lion count. And you know, and it's like sort of the cart horse, we don't want to go build, you know, um large scale apartment communities, you know, in an area doesn't, you know. Doesn't need them technically, but when you look at the reports today, but with the expansion of TRIC, the expansion of Northern. Nevada Industrial Center, the coming of Microsoft, which comes up to one of our property lines. Track that now comes to our north property line, you know, the future is coming and we need a workforce in places where the workforce to live. But build these communities, so you know, this allows us to get there and allows everybody to understand, you know, what's coming. And allows us to fund it now.
Or just an additional asset for you to.
Yeah, stack it goes on the top of it, when you look at the capital stack and sort of the construction lenders love it. Because again, they're in first position at a very loan, a very low, you know, loan to cost.
Okay, appreciate that explanation.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I I do have some concerns with this, um it says it's no cost to the county, but. Clearly, it's going to take some staff time and the DA's time. And with the budget work we're doing right now, we're already asking our staff to do way more with a whole lot less. That's a concern to me and I also would like to know if our district attorney has had a chance to review this resolution.
Well, I kind of, uh, but I've got a question.
Well, I want to finish with the his presentation, Steve Ry, District Attorney. I have reviewed the resulate, ru- resolution, I'm not prepared to make a recommendation one way or the other today.
Okay.
Um, and I don't think that's on the agenda item, uh but yes, I have reviewed it and I've done some research into it, but I'm not an expert in that.
Okay.
So was that the presentation we have with us, so?
Maybe I'll be a backup there, um and then I figured the best today would be allow Brian. McCarter to answer your questions, because what he does for a living, so.
I'd be okay hearing the presentation first.
I, well, that was the presentation, so now they're, or do they have a presentation?
So he's here to answer your question.
Okay.
So again, there should not be any impact to your staff, uh because uh the administrator handles. All the program and once this resolution is passed. Uh the only thing that happens here at the county is when we close at escrow, additional document is recorded and Brian will go into detail.
Okay, then I'll just say my other concerns were um in your backup material, since there's twenty-three hundred projects across the US. That's not very many projects across the whole United States and that concerns me that maybe it's not so tried and true yet. And a lot of the projects are in bigger cities. And they can kind of afford to be a guinea pig and I don't think we can and that's kind of a concern to me, so. I think there's a lot more that we need to know about this and the other thing is. Eighty-five percent financing concerns me because when I looked at what happens if this fails, this debt stays with the property. And if we have something partially built out there, you said it's already hard to get financing, it's going to be really hard to try and ever sell that project. And have it ever be finished, that's a huge problem for me, I worked in the design world. During the last huge economic downturn and that was a major issue.
Any other questions before we go to, are there questions for? Uh, yeah, I wouldn't go there first. I have a question for, I guess it's Cliff Kellogg, because. Things, it's my weakness why I'm asking this question, okay, it's, I want growth, I want uh good programs, I want opportunities. Federal growth, so in in the. Learning uh the free market, it seems like if somebody wants to learn money to somebody to build something. Why did this have to go through the federal agencies and have to become NRS to do so? Where was it, where was the start of it on the federal side?
Brian, you want to take that?
Um, Brian McCarter, uh CEO of Sustainable Real Estate Solutions and we administer. Uh CPace Programs uh for eight jurisdictions that have active programs in in the state of Nevada. Regarding the background, um there um. The nature of CPaces, each state, there are now thirty-eight states that have active programs and typically a state enabling legislation. Is passed and then either a state agency will step forward and uh sponsor the program. Uh and local jurisdictions can adopt the program that way, that is a model. In the state of Colorado that we have been administering a similar program now for about um nine years. Uh Nevada, on the other hand, um state enabling legislation was passed, however, no. State agency has stepped up to be a statewide program administrator and therefore it's up to the local jurisdictions, whether that be. Incorporated uh city or unincorporated county areas to adopt the program. And the reason for the uh public-private partnership is that this form of financing, as uh Brett was indicating. Is an assessment-based form of financing and the the local government um is the. Really the only entity that can authorize the issuance of a voluntary assessment. To be recorded on that parcel of property and that's the, that's the basis uh for the local jurisdiction's involvement.
I got me where I wanted, but thank you for that information. Have a question for county.
I'd be happy to address the um the question of the time allocation for the local jurisdiction as well, if you would like.
I couldn't hear him.
He said that he'd be happy to address the time allocation for local jurisdiction. We'd like.
Yeah, I would like to go ahead, go ahead and address that.
Sure, um typically, so there there would be um a few upfront tasks on behalf of county staff, the district attorney had just mentioned that he. It sounds like he's done a preliminary review of the proposed resolution, that resolution has um been prepared as a. Template has been uh used and reviewed by the eight active city and um county attorney offices that have. Passed such a resolution, so that would be um part of the initial um startup. Uh the county would then have an action to either determine that it would want to administer the program in-house. Or to hire a third-party program administrator, uh currently the active jurisdictions have all done the latter. And so there would be an action for a um professional services agreement for a third-party administrator if that was preferred. And that really is the um, the startup um requirements of of jurisdiction staff. Then on an ongoing basis, as the commissioner mentioned, frankly, the the program is really not a high-volume uh project. Um uh flow typically and that's due to generally where it's filling the market gap as. Um Brett was indicating before is on uh new development deals where where financing is difficult. Um to acquire, um having said that, at the time when a transaction is pending. The um uh the requisite person within the the jurisdiction will. Uh have an action to sign the assessment agreement, that's the two-party agreement with the. Uh property owner that is requesting a voluntary pace assessment to be recorded on the property. Uh so that would be an action uh at the time of a transaction. As well as signing the uh document to record the assessment lien in the county land records. And to subsequently assign that lien to the private lender that has agreed to finance the project. Um, on uh ongoing from there, the the uh capital provider that has financed the project. Has the responsibility for the billing collections and any um enforcement activity. Uh similar to the, what they would do with a commercial mortgage, so there wouldn't be any uh recurring responsibilities on jurisdiction staff.
I'd like to be telling your question.
My best thing.
I just want to go through the process here because normally, in my understanding is that. We usually get stuff like this from our staff, from uh from you guys are the ones that presented. This is being presented by someone outside our staff and I kind of go to our staff for the. Them to do all the hallmark, all the research and come back and. No offense, but usually the resolution is done by our, our staff on our benefit. Not when somebody else gives us a resolution, even though it might be a great resolution that you could use. And I'd rather have my DA prepare it. Um, so is that the normal process? This looks like it's a little bit different than our normal process.
Andrew Baskin, Lion County Manager, so yeah, I mean typically what happens is somebody comes forward with an idea, you know, staff will work with them to kind of vet it out. Uh um and get some additional information, Mr. Love came to my county staff back in November, I believe, uh last year. Um with this proposal, um staff had asked for some additional information uh. At that time, um and there was some, some back and forth and um with the comptroller who was working on this project. Um but uh then Mr. Lovett had requested that this item be agenda. Time frame, um and so um. I haven't had a whole lot of time to work on this, yeah, I mean. Up until this point from January to now, we're pretty much buried in budget stuff and then of course you got the legislature this year. Um, and so I haven't had a whole lot of time to work on this and. Don't have a whole lot of, lot more information to provide you myself, I know I could fully did work with Mr. Lovett a bit on this, so. Um, to answer your question, that's kind of our preferred and then, you know, we kind of work back and forth, get something that makes sense for staff and then uh. Bring it forward, that way it's kind of all packaged up and ready to go for the board to review, take a look at it.
Yeah, because I, I can go online and I'm, you know, I've got all the NRS here, all loaded of every uh. Every question that I kind of go, understand the whole concept, if it's a good thing, I want it, but. I want our, this is the one project right now, but we're gonna make it the whole county wide, we're gonna do this on, make sure there's no unintended consequences. So that's why I'm kind of looking at is, I I want staff to be on it, not. Basically, the developer saying this is a good idea, put it through, that's where I'm standing right now.
And that's definitely why we wrote the agenda item as we did, and not to prove the resolution, but to provide direction to staff to make sure this is something that the board is interested in and. Um, you know, if it is, then we can certainly do the research on it, but if it's not, I mean.
Uh wait, Mr. Hendricks, I'm sure, yes, Mr. Fairley. So when I hear no cost to the county and then bound hours, is that, is that what I heard? Is, you know, I'm just making sure, I think that's what I heard, so. Um, yeah, are there approvals that have to happen, are there with staff reviews and if there are, how many layers of that onion? How many layers of that onion, does the county peer back before? From inception of a plan with this in place to. You're bringing out of the county's hands and to the developer, are there steps?
Yes, Josh for Lion County Comptroller, first get to Mr. Perry, is that any expert? Uh, no, I'm just teasing, so I reached out, just so you know, with due diligence, back in November, I met uh. Met with Mr. Lovett, we met with, we did a Zoom meeting. Had the same information that we talked about, I actually got the opportunity to ask a number of questions. And then he's like, I'll give you some people, sorry, I'm gonna answer your question on this.
No, that's fun.
He's gonna give you some people to to contact, I'm like, well, my understanding from what has been portrayed is. Almost every local government in Nevada has already adopted this, this resolution, Lion County, so. Instead of cherry picking who I get to talk to, I want to reach out to my counterparts who I'm comfortable with and see what they say, so. I reached out to a number of them and the response back was, oh yeah, we all did the resolution, I haven't had a single project. So I can't give you any, any experience on that, so. I was still waiting on a few more to to get back to me and respond to me and then it was January and we talked together and. I asked him, can you give me some additional uh people to talk to, because I'm running to the end of the runs that I'm. I'm usually corresponding with and so down southern Nevada where I don't have as many contacts, he gave me a list of contacts. Some of them I, I do know from my contacts, one of them was retired at that point. Uh we were served on the community local government finance together, but. I sent out a number of emails because it was budget season, legislative season and I'm working mornings, evenings and even sometimes between. And uh so I sent out emails, they never responded back to me. Mr. Love reached out and he had someone from the city of Las Vegas actually. Reach out to me and so I talked to them, a couple of weeks later, they called me. Their information, that's all the information I've been able to get from another local government at this point, was. They have a number of templates, the contractor that they use is fantastic, they don't have any issues with it, they've done a number of good projects in the city of Las Vegas. They um they do spend staff time, the person I talked to said it's a few hours per application of he spends and then. With the templates, it gets done by the contractor, he reviews it and a bit of the work. It goes to the attorney and the attorney has to go and review a bit of the work and then after that, it's pretty much, there's, there's not a lot that needs to be done at that. So I don't have any significant concern other than staff time on the district attorney, you might be able to fill in the other ones as far as. What time does it take staff to do it, it sounds like it's probably gonna be, I'm guessing four or five hours maximum per. Application on staff outside of the district attorney's office, but I'll let Steve speak for the district attorney's office.
Well, my question real quick would be, is that more time when you're spending any project that's financed any other way in in?
Yes.
Okay, so there's more time than normal, alright.
Uh Steve Ry, District Attorney, just to add briefly to what Josh just said, I did have a chance. Speak briefly with the city attorney in Las Vegas that handles the CPace Program. And he indicated about ten hours per application, I don't know, it could be a little bit less. Um and it's, as Josh described, the consultant prepares the documents, they come to the city attorney's office. And there's some minor tweaks and review and then I believe the applications would all come to the county commission. So there is that piece of it as well and they're approved, I believe, by the county commission because that um lien needs to be assigned. To the lender and so, uh you may be able to speak to that more.
Brian should.
Yeah, but I thought the city attorney said that they do uh go before the city council for that assignment. But I don't, I'm not bothered about that, but that's my assumption.
This is uh Brian McCarter again, um from SRS, yeah, um. The city of Las Vegas has made that determination that a, they want a project to appear on the consent agenda of a city council meeting. So they do have an action in that jurisdiction to prepare uh the, you know, the project data as. Uh part of the package that goes out to the county uh city uh council members. Other jurisdictions have elected not to take that step, so that would be something else that uh the county could consider. Whether it was necessary, in other words, the other jurisdictions have left that to the determination of the county manager and the. Program administrator and there's not an action to bring it forward uh as part of the, a jurisdiction meeting.
Did I see someone's hand up? Go ahead, Commissioner.
With with the legislature, legislature going right now on our budget and everything, how long would it take for staff to? Really dig into this and come back with a recommendation?
And I don't know. Anything to question, what would you, who would stop the control and back to putting back a presentation?
Yeah.
Not not that if you, I don't want to give you. Go in there and do it right now. How quickly can you do that? As I put in the.
Um, and talking with the uh, district attorney as a month to six weeks. Would probably get something back together.
Right, you know, final budget and closing the legislation.
I, yeah, I mean, uh. It just depends on on kind of where the board's priority level is with it too.
Commissioner, well, I don't know, so, no, yeah. Uh, let's just show them, uh, them, and not because I'm not necessarily for it, um. No, but it's fully approved it. Um, let's see how it goes for them when they first go around. I was throwing the first time approval and there's going to be several hours in it. Uh, with the learning curve and whatnot. I think we can run from my neighbors to our the city of Florida to the north or some other. Government here in the northern Nevada that uh, that does this, so I'm gonna. I'm gonna, I just don't think this is something that is that pressing right now.
You know, and my concern is time running and liability. You know, I mean, I think that's what we're all talking about here as far as this issue for the county, but we're short on all of that.
Okay, uh, Commissioner.
I uh, well, Fisher Hendrick spread up a good point uh, with defaults. However, lots of risk in in any construction project, no matter who's financing that, but. I personally, I would like to see it go forward. Um. We need. The county will need as much uh, commercial development as possible, um, and. I think we should be uh, welcome. Um, to that rather than we're blocking that. So I I would like to see a presentation further on it.
Do you have any other comment? Uh, I'm looking at this one. I do not want to. Lose opportunities. Okay, so. Yeah, uh, Mr. Fodor uh, explained that how appropriate. And I want my money, but also I don't want to put the risk on Lion County at all. I don't want to be the the pilot program. On our backs. Uh, there's a lot of risk there, but I am willing to move forward with uh, a. Like the county space. Of when you feel comfortable and when you have all your answers, I want you to be able to come back and say. Such a good project for Lion County, or no, we've got, we shouldn't be the pilot program. I I'm kind of relying on staff, district attorney. To really do everything on all on all behalf. And I like. Uh, I mean, I'm not saying that they don't know their their stuff. I just don't want to rely on outside developers and I want to start uh, making it toward that's our. How we do things in Lion County. I I want to set precedence here. I want it all come from. People who pay to protect our own interest. So that would be my uh, direction to staff if if we agree on that, but. Uh, I'd have to get a consensus from. Everyone, if that's the direction you guys want to go and what, uh, you want to go that way. Uh, Commissioner him, uh, Jacobson said that he was going to go against it.
Well, I'm I'm for. Uh, not like right now pressing them. I think a month, six weeks seems like it's pressing. I think when when we drop it off here a little bit. Uh, after the legislative session, um, find a way we had to get our feet under ourselves. Uh, staff has time hopefully to look at this and. Do due diligence so that, you know, we cross our teeth so we don't get dotted in the eyes. And that would be my my direction would not set a time, but allow staff to set that time. I worked with that. But my name was for a month to six weeks.
I mean, I agree with that. Uh, I feel like. You guys are going to have to kind of become experts because if we're going to do this, we want to make sure we get it right the first time because. It's going to be the precedent moving forward, and we have to, we have to be very protective of what we have. Um, but like Scott said, I don't want to shut out something that could be really good for Lion County. So um, we're going to rely on you.
And I agree, I I don't want to shut down something that that could help us get select level development.
So my my, I know if I'm going to go and make the motion, then we'll see where it goes, but uh, to direct staff. To whatever we're talking about, see if it's a feasible thing, if it's on the best benefit of Lion County. With the time constraint of what. On your timetable on the on the county's timetable, because I don't want to push it through because a month, month and a half. And this is reasoning. That's not part of the motion is uh, when the legislation ends, we're going to be down there full time. And the, I don't want to do this. I want to. So that's my motion.
One second.
Do I have a second? I'm motion by Commissioner Carr, second by Commissioner Hendricks. Any other comment?
Good morning, Commissioner. Swendy Lewis, um, Smith Valley resident. Um, interesting, listening to everything, um, because I actually wrote this yesterday, so. Surprised I got so many of the points in there. Uh, Lion County is not a wealthy county, but it is rich in land and potential. Uh, encouraging businesses and developers to come and invest here. Creates opportunity for increased job creation through workforce development, brings revenues intact as for Lion County. Uh, C PACE is a tool. It's easy to get in the weeds with these documents because so much stuff, right? You turn me, I have read, oh, I've been through it. I'm working on it somewhere else at at the moment. Um, but it's a tool. It's a tool for municipalities to use and for businesses and developers. Um, by approving C PACE for Lion County, you're making it more attractive for investors, developers and businesses to come here, which is what Mr. Kestner always says. Um, approving C PACE creates no danger to Lion County. You maintain your laws, regulations, ordinances, policies, procedures that are under the same protection you've always had. There's no danger on it. Everything's still going to come back. Uh, approving C PACE creates opportunity, and Lion County needs opportunity right now. Approving C PACE does create some initial review work for administration. And this can be addressed working collaboratively with the potential project. Um, owners and we can learn together. I agree, fallen habit, friendly hazard. Um. Maybe they won't have a project coming up. I believe Lion County will have a project coming up pretty soon if C PACE can be implemented. Continually delaying reflects poorly on the administration and makes us appear insufficient, unsupportive. And maybe even hostile to our growth and future um, positive prospects. Um, we should be encouraging inviting investors into Lion County, creating a special district for C PACE. Offers energy efficiency, renewable energy, resilience, water efficiency, everything we're all trying to do moving forward. Again, there is no danger to Lion County by approving C PACE, and if fear is causing the hesitancy and delay, we will never grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? We have a motion and a second. Those those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. This brings us to agenda requests. Do we have any agenda request?
Nope.
Not at this time. Commissioner comments? Do we have any final comments? Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chair. Um. Being animal clear of the awareness meant as well, I want to recognize our animal shelter and animal control employees for all they do for our credit. Uh, it's appreciated. Um, and then um, I'd like to encourage the lobbyists to reach out to family. Um. Before. Those that might affect both. Uh, I know that there was a railroad bill that wasn't necessarily good for Lion County. But it only might work for family and that that might be an example of where we disagree. But I just think if it's good for family, it should be good for Lion County. If it's good for Lion County, it should be good for. To the family and and you're another one to move those guys out, but I don't know if they have a lobbyist, but. Um, I just think some communication um, on some of these things, just to find out where we're at so that. We're not tripping over each other in Carson. Just a quick conversation on where we stand on these, I think, might. Benefit us, um, if that's at all possible. And uh, I do want to throw in. Family can reach out to Lion County too. I don't know that they've done that, so, but sometimes. And maybe it's happening, uh, from my understanding, I don't know that it is, but just throwing that out there. Thank you.
I I just want to go back to his agenda request for one second. Uh, can you bring that, uh, put that on the next agenda to uh, talk about that particular bill? Uh, because I think there's a little explanation that goes on of why the Republican Council of Lion County. That needs to be uh, talked about. We do meet with them. Constantly and and with their lobbyists, so I think.
Families?
Yes, so I think we'll bring some more information to you.
Is that meaning in Carson or is it before?
I meet them in Carson. They usually call me and say, what do you refer? Uh, so I just.
That's different than what I chat with a councilman from firmly and that that what you just said is differs from what he said.
That's why I think if we have the agenda item, then we can talk openly about it. Okay? That's all. What do you? Comments? Oh, yeah, I I think that um, my comment, uh, when it gets to the legislation, things happen and they happen quickly down there, and so uh. To be open for everybody to realize what why we we take certain stances on certain things, I think we have to educate our board. I'm ready to lay on some of those ones, but they just come and go so fast that it's hard to keep up with everything, but we'll solve that and uh. That's all I have, uh. For the public participation. Do we have any public comment? We're going to move on to closed session, presenting N R S two four one. I, two, three, two, so we're going to go into closed session. So before we do, I will close the room, come back in. At eleven fifty-five.